We'll call this meeting to order at 6:34, January 6th, budget meeting. And I'd like to welcome the communities and guests that are here, also our budget buddies, Allison and Jean, and then also our newly appointed school board member, Stephen and Rebecca. Welcome. There we go. Before we get started, I'd like to take a moment to speak to the insurgents by armed rioters in our Capitol building. We have a lot going on right now in our Capitol. And they stormed the building to disrupt the democratic tradition where a joint session of Congress gathered in the House chamber, both House and Senate representatives, to formally count the votes of the Electoral College for our president and vice president -elect. The assault on our democracy is happening because these insurgents preferred presidential candidate, lost a free and fair election, which was contested and confirmed to be incredibly secure, free of fraud, and fair election. This is disgraceful in and of itself. Yet, for me, what is beyond contemptible is the very fact that these rioters have not been treated like the unarmed peaceful Black Lives Matters protesters who were sprayed down with tear gas, rubber bullets, arrested by multitudes of military-suited grade officers as we all witnessed this throughout the summer and fall. And how long it took to mobilize safety and police officers and National Guard to get to our Capitol and to protect the workers in the Capitol, our elected officials. The scenes from this assault on our American democracy further highlights how liberty and justice for all continues to be withheld from our BIPOC brothers and sisters. We are here to govern tonight as elected officials for the better of our Winuski community, and we move anti-racism and democracy forward by being here together. So, thank you all for being here, and I want to send out, I think, safety and care for those who are getting caught up in this, that are just American citizens who just want our country to be democratic and be fair for all. So, agenda review and adjustments. Anybody have anything? Okay. Public, yes?
Just all set.
Okay. Public comments. If there's any public comments, now would be a time to speak. Also, we are having a board conversation after the budget session, and we will be opening public comments during that time also. So considering that information, if anybody who has joined us from the community would like to voice or share anything, please use the raise your hand on Zoom, and Emily will call on you.
Tori, I don't see any raised hands. I do have a comment here. It looks like it's in reference to a conversation about the safety and security topic. Oh, here's a comment. There are a couple of comments popping up. Okay, I'll start moving people over, and then it looks like Mary Ann does have her hand raised, so if she'd like to speak during her comment, she can do that as well.
Okay. So, I just want to clarify, just to make sure it's really clear, is that if you have a comment to add to our safety and security conversation that we're going to have after the budget work session, that would be a wonderful time to do it. If there's something else you'd like to speak to now, that can happen right now, too. And everyone will have about two to three minutes. Can I have a phone?
Thank you for clarifying that. So, I'm going to move Elizabeth over. Okay, Elizabeth, go ahead.
Okay, sorry, I was just typing it. But, so I just wanted to clarify that the conversation that's happening later is that regarding, like, planning of the town halls that will be happening, or is this sort of that process of giving input?
Actually, it's part of sort of thinking about the next phase and how we want to shape that, and sort of rooted in sort of what are our values around community engagement and how we want to shape the next phase of gathering information from our community around safety and security in schools.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have another hand raised here from Graham.
Great. Hi, Graham.
Hi. I'm going to talk a little bit about safety and security because I have another meeting. Ironically, I'm down in Georgia working on the ballot elections, so.
Georgia.
Yeah, I guess I'm interested in data from the school and the police as to what have been the safety and security incidences in the last decade. Having been a principal for nine years in Burlington without an SRO at a very large school and worked in Winuski, I was blown away by how calm and secure and safe Winuski is that doesn't seem to be related to a police officer. So, how many arrests have there been in the last decade? How many fights have a police officer only been able to break up, an SRO? How many non-trespassing orders based on incidences at school and out of school has an SRO issued? I just honestly don't see what problem an SRO fixes. As we're watching on the news, safety is a huge perception and a bit of an illusion. If somebody wants to cause harm in Winuski, you'll need a lot more than one SRO there. The police department's right down the street. The idea of the police chief farming out help, I think I had read, was, seemed like it was a bit of a bullying tactic and incredibly irresponsible, saying that there might not be, you know, help on the way without an SRO. So, I'm just really struck by what are all the issues that an SRO allegedly would address based on the reality of the last five to eight years in Winuski? I simply was stunned by how calm and peaceful the building was in my seven months there. Coming from a school without an SRO, that had a lot of challenges.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing that. We are going to be talking about gathering data and whatnot. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Tori, it looks like the last raised hand, and Mary Ann DeBay did have her hand raised, but I believe she'd like to make a comment during the safety and security portion, so we can move forward now.
Excellent. All right. So, it's budget work session time. I will hand it over to Sean and Nicole.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And Tori, thank you so much for addressing the important events happening today. It's very discouraging, and I just appreciate that you're putting that right up front because it's so important to, important foundations that are at risk that also support the governance that you all do on the school board. So, thank you. All right. I am going to go ahead and share my screen. And just make sure that that is visible to people. Does that look okay, Jean?
I'm trying. Yeah, I got it.
Okay. You're the first one on my screen that I could see, so I was looking for a visual. So, since our last time together on December 30th, we've done some work based on the conversation that was had by the board and budget buddies. And Nicole has prepared a lot of information and responses to the requests from the last meeting. And so, basically, I'm going to kick it off and just give you a little bit of an overview like we have at the past couple of meetings of where we are since the last meeting, and then I'll hand it over to Nicole. So, we have managed to decrease the expense side by, from 3.36% down to 2.71. And we did that through a lot of kind of pencil sharpening across the budget. There was not just one or two big things that we were able to take. There was, I would say, some more significant reductions in the areas of facilities, IT, that account for those variances. We also were able to put the money that we discussed for the liaisons into the budget. And I want to just be really clear that that money right now is the resource, if it were to be included in the budget and approved, that would be the ability for us to either extend liaison contracts to full year, the four liaisons that are serving largest populations, or to increase capacity, which would mean additional liaisons. And the reason that we need that flexibility is because we have been awarded a grant through the Working Communities Challenge and working with the city. And so, we're in the midst of developing a plan for that. And so, we're still working on how we would partner with the city to have liaisons be a shared resource and also to meet the needs of the city and the school and to offer multiple liaisons, full year contracts, to make their wages more livable, more stable, and so forth. So, that's just a little bit of a clarification on the liaison piece, but that is in there. There's been no reductions in transportation. There's been no significant reductions in program or staffing, as we discussed, and that was really based on your conversation on the 30th, that you certainly showed that you were not interested in kind of chipping away at program and staffing that we've worked so hard over the last eight years or so to build back up. So, any questions for me on the overview, the variances? Oh, the other piece I would say is the spending per equalized pupil is now down to 4.84% increase year to year. And again, that's an important number because that is a number that's statutorily required to be on the ballot.
Sean, when we met on the 30th, part of the reduction from 5.49 to 3.36 was a direct statement of some quote-unquote "risk" in special ed. I understand that we had that discussion about, you know, where do you come up with the funding and whatnot. Any particular risk in the reduction from 3.36 to 2.71 that we should be specifically aware of? You say it shaved across a lot of things, but is there?
There is some additional special ed risk that Nicole is going to point out specifically when we get to the tax sheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. The other cuts, though, are trimming line item budget items that will have little to no quote "risk," but will have cost implications. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but we feel confident also that, like I said, we were able to go across the budget, and so there won't be significant impacts on those. We, you know, we're going to have to, in terms of like IT, we're going to have to tighten up around our software subscriptions and make sure that we're being as efficient as possible, you know, similar with things like facilities, supplies ordering, and equipment and repairs and things like that. So, it's tight. You know, it is very tight in the kind of the supplies, equipment, the day-to-day operations of things is very, very tight.
And I would argue that in this year, in this circumstance, in this environment, that's probably the right way to go. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before we go to the next slide? Okay. Go ahead, Nicole.
So, this is a little small, and it's for two reasons. One, I wanted you to see a side-by-side comparison to the figures you looked at on the 30th compared to the budget that we're presenting today. And I also added three rows at the bottom to show how the income percentage is calculated so that it's all on the same sheet. And in future slides, you can see actually what that will mean for Winuski taxpayers. So, it'll be easier for you to see, move along, but with the decrease in the expenditure budget and an increase in, well, and use of $100,000 in fund balance as an offsetting revenue, we were able to bring education spending per equalized pupil down to $16,621. So, that then translates, as a result of the formula, to a less than 13% homestead tax rate increase and a 2.59% income percentage, which is roughly, you know, 0.25 percentage point increase over last year.
So, you've utilized $100,000 in fund balance to support some of the budget. The expenditures piece only went down $100,000. So, those are the cuts that you made. The ed spending goes down by $200,000. That's the impact of the other $100,000 of fund balance? Is that where that shows up?
The fund balance comes up in offsetting revenues, so that then leads you to, so education spending is your local budget plus your federal budget minus your offsetting revenues, and that gives you ed spending, and then that flows into the rest of the calculation. The other big change is on the 30th, we had $100,000 in the budget for debt service, and this budget has no increase in debt service. And I can explain in the next slide why we're making that recommendation.
And did you say already, Nicole, that I missed the additional $15,000 in?
I did. Thank you. It's an additional, so last time you met, it was a risk of $50,000 in special education. We've taken an additional $15,000 risk on special education for 65.
And the total of what you would call risk in a special ed was how much?
$65,000.
Wow. Okay. Arguably conservative, but thank you. All right. Next slide. Now, the very bottom of that one, I can't read it. I've got the, I've got the header across the bottom of the footer across the bottom of the Zoom call. That's the income yield.
So, it's the income yield, then the projected FY22 income percentage based on the ed spending per pupil and the income yield that was in the December 1 letter. And then below that is what the income percentage was last year.
So, just so that I'm clear, and I hear the projected FY22 income percentage would be the tax increase seen by those folks that are home, has dead incomes less than the limit, paying the taxes only on the income, would see a 2.59% increase? Is that right?
Not an increase. That's the total percentage. In the later slide, it'll be.
Okay. Peace. All right. Thank you.
Okay. So, there's been a lot of clarification around the capital project, debt service, over the last couple of days. And one piece was, I went back to the financial advisors that had supported us through the, you know, navigation of the interim financing package, because I was using estimates that they had provided me back in October, and in terms of the cost of issuance for the new note that we need to obtain this coming year. And they had indicated that the cost would be $200,000. And so, I built that into our budget. Earlier today, I circled back with them and said, you know, is that a cost that will be paid out of the local budget, or is that a cost that will be paid, you know, through the generation of premium that gets generated when the note gets sold on the market, which is extremely complicated? And if you guys have questions about how all that works, we can definitely talk about that at the next week's meeting. And I can get them available to answer questions if you have questions about that process. But the upshot is, we don't have to pay for those costs out of our local budget. So, that means we won't have any additional costs this fiscal year for the capital project, which will mean we'll have $800,000 to carry over as opposed to $600,000 for next year. And so, because of that, we're able to not increase the amount we put in the budget next year and still maintain a relatively level incremental increase over the following three years to get us to where we need to get to in FY25.
And so, that leaves us with half a million a year to be raised through budget increases for the next three years to get up to the level to support the rest of the bond. Okay.
And those increases are lower than I shared with you last time because we have more to spread out over that four-year period.
Yay for good news.
Yeah.
Take it where you can get it, for sure.
Thank you for doing the due diligence and double checking and doing that. We appreciate that.
Yes. That double checking on this is.
I think to be able to stand up to the community and say that the impact to the capital project this year, we've made, we could have made it anything, but with $0.10 or $0.9 something cent handicap to start with, this is great news, even though we're still at 13%. But that's awesome. Thank you.
It's another benefit of the USDA financing the project.
Yeah.
Anything else on that one, or next slide?
So, this is, I think, the typical, I slightly modified it, but slide you would present as part of the budget process so that folks understand impact on their tax bill. So, if this budget were approved and the income yield stays as it is in the December 1 letter, then we'd be projecting a 2.59% income percentage, which is available to folks with household incomes, 90,000, between 90,000 and 47,000, and then it gets slightly more complicated on the higher end and the lower end. But for simplicity purpose, if your household income is between 900,000 and 40,000, then this would be the impact on your, the annual increase for you.
Do we have, sorry, Nicole, do we have data from Jesse and the city? I believe that in the past, the number of households that were able to be in this 90,000 or less bucket was over 2/3, if not 3/4, of the community. Do we know if that's still the case?
I don't. I haven't asked the city that question, but we certainly could.
Yeah, I don't have that number either, but that's what I remember it being, between 60 and 70% the last time we did it, which I think was a year or two ago.
For the community dinner, that may end up being a virtual community sharing event. If we can have that, it would be a good data point, I think.
Yeah, I don't know if they use census data or if they have different data that they use.
They seem to come up with it pretty cleanly and pretty quickly when we've asked in the past, so it's a number they have.
Okay. I'm happy to have that for you for the next week.
Thank you. I think it goes out to 3/4 almost, or it was.
So, Nicole, can you go over exactly how that? I understand that the state sets the 2%, and then there's an income yield that we use the same way to get a ratio with our actual per pupil spending.
Yes. So, it is education spending per equalized pupil divided by the income yields multiplied by 2%.
And there's nothing about the CLA in it?
No.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you for helping me dig into that.
Well, it was confusing because I saw that video, and it was.
Me, too. I was like, oh.
So, thanks.
So, this chart shows you if your house site, based on your house site's assessed value, if you are paying based on property value and not based on your income, what the difference would be, and it translates to 12.8% increase.
And so, the.
Category of folks that sort of pay a blend of both based on their property and their income.
So, based on questions also that we have gotten in the past, the interesting piece is that we get asked the question, how much is this going to impact my taxes? The first question you've got to ask is, what is your household income? And the first answer you get 95% of the time is, it's none of your business. So, one of the things I would like to ask this year is to have, I understand there is a website for the tax department that has some level of inputs that people have to put in, but they can get the impact of this on their taxes. I would like to have that website available. These are nice for generic overviews, but for Johnny that lives on North Street and doesn't want to tell you his income, I would really like to be able to point him to a website where they can go and get that answer specifically for themselves. And this can then presented as, these are the best that we know based on the estimates that we've made, but for your own specific, you know, for your own specific situation, please go to this website and determine that.
So, the only issue I, well, the only resource I have seen on the tax department's website is a calculator tool, but it's for folks once the tax rate has been set. So, you enter in your code, and then it generates for you what the, so I would need to poke around a little, it may be that I just don't know where it is, and maybe Sean can point me to it if he's more familiar with it. I'm not familiar with one that is sort of speculative, like if it's this and then it's this.
Right. And the only reason I bring it up is that at Lake Maury, three years ago or so, we were having a conversation about putting a table like this up in front of the community, and a guy said, oh, no, 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 we give them this website, and that's where we send them so we don't have to give them numbers that then come bouncing back to us. So, I just assumed that there was something available already. If not, it's fine, but just, it would help. It would help because Johnny's not going to tell me his household income. Most of the time.
So this slide attempt to respond to Liz's question about how fund balance to cover to offset operating expenses sort of comes back to haunt you the next year. And so this is just an illustration. These are not the real numbers. But you can see in the FY22. Column, you have. You know, a projected operating budget within a corresponding increase. And then where the fund balance shows up is under offsetting revenues. So for this example, I used a million dollars of fund balance and added it to the offsetting revenues, which would have the effect of lowering your education spending and translates to homestead tax rate of $1.83 and an income percentage of 2.6%. So if you then move on to FY23, I assumed. A 2% increase in expenses. Plus what we know you'll need to add next year, $500,000 for the capital project. And that's where I came up with a, you know, reasonable operating budget increase. Unlikely you would see a flat operating budget, but it's low increase. And. Didn't include that million dollars as an offsetting revenue, so you would not have that the following year. And so that increases your education spending. By $2 million. Which leads to over $2. $2.06 homestead tax rate and a 2.75% income percentage. And that increase is solely due to. The both the increases in the budget, but also the need to sort of make up for the lost offsetting revenue. So it assumes the CLA stays the same, the yields stay the same. All the factors that we're contending with this year that have contributed to the increase in tax rates don't exist in this scenario. The increase is solely driven by the fact that your budget went up, but also you have to make up for that million dollars in offsetting revenue that you used to buy down the rate in '22. So I hope that's helpful, Liz. I don't know if you have any questions.
No, that is really helpful. I guess the only other question is how does the that rate compare to what we just looked at as our proposed? FY22.
Yeah, so because the operating, but it's been a little bit of a moving target over the last two days. Those, the FY22 numbers really don't. They're not the same as what I've showed you in early slides, so I'm sorry about that. I didn't have time to change this slide too.
That's okay, but the impacts are.
But it's, yeah, it's an illustration.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this is helpful. Thank you.
Sure.
And so just continuing on that piece, Nicole, for a second. The $100,000 that is in the base here for fund balance would have the same impact next year on a much lower, 10% of the. Of the fund balance move and. Have we, what is the? What is the impact this year? We're at 12.8% with the 100,000. Do you have the impact without that 100,000 in it?
I can tell you what it would be.
I know, everything is a variable, right? You can't build anything with constants.
That's why spreadsheets are so amazing.
You know how to use them, yeah.
So with out the fund balances and offsetting revenue, property tax rate increase would be 13 and a half percent.
Okay, so we're talking about three quarters of a point. Okay.
And. I would say you, as opposed to the million dollar example where you would have really used up a good chunk of the fund balance that you have with $100,000 and $1.7 million available, you have the ability to sort of phase it out.
Paper it off. Okay.
As opposed to a $1 million cliff.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And this next slide is we were able to receive from the USDA. The difference between borrowing 57.8 million and 56.8 million. So the way the loan is structured, there will be. 60 semi annual payments. And so this slide just shows you what the difference would be essentially if you borrow 1 million less. You'll spend three and a half million less over the life of the loan.
5% is not insignificant.
And that, I believe, is all that I have.
Yeah, this last slide was just a reminder, you know, you saw it last week too, that you have 320,000 in the capital reserve. You have just about 1.8 million as of June 30th, 2020 in the fund balance, which does not include any anticipated fund balance from FY21. Which I believe we are. Looking at about 270 to 300,000 right now in our projections. A favorable balance for FY21. So I.
Capital projects rollover.
Right. So I guess what we, what we're looking for, from the board and the budget buddies tonight is just some reactions and comments to what we presented. And then given that next week is really set up for adoption. If there is any additional information that you feel like you need in order to make a final decision next week. We would love to hear that. We would like to prepare you as much as possible to be able to confidently go in and adopt the budget next week. And so that we can then begin the journey of preparing all of the requisite materials for the community. Both, both required statutorily and the materials to share how all of these investments go toward helping our students and in our broader community as well. So we'll hand it back to you guys. Questions, comments, reactions to this? Anything else that you might need?
I'll start if you don't mind. To take this to less than 3% to me is about as low as you can go with the values that you actually have to work with. And that is, we can control our spending. We cannot control the sales value of houses in the community. We cannot control what the legislature has sets for the yields. We can't control the result of this COVID thing. 2.7 and maintaining the, the programmatic pieces that we've had in place going forward. 12.8% hard to swallow, three quarters of our community likely, and I'm using three quarters, we'll get that number. Paying on income, looking at a max of about, what was it, $225 increase on. Which is $50 a quarter. I, I think that is something that I believe we can bring forward. And take a little bit of work, but I don't see where we want to go any less than that. And I'm, I'm not, we're being recorded here, so I'm going to say it anyway, then I'm going to say I didn't say it. But the 100,000 fund balance I'm not happy about. But in this situation, I think it is a viable use of that, of that money and a good spot to use it in. More than that, I would be very hesitant because you can see what the impact is for next year. And like Nicole said, we can, with the fund balances sits there right now, we can bring that 100,000 down to 80 next year, down to 60, down to 40. And, and continue to kind of roll it off until we're at a level set. I'll, I'll go back on mute and open the floor.
Anybody else want to jump in? Thanks, Mike. Yeah, Stephen.
Thanks. I want to first say thank you to Sean, Nicole and administration for putting together a solid budget. Listening very closely to the conversations that we've been having and coming back with some real thoughtful changes. I agree with Mike that it's impressive to be going into the budget vote with such a small increase in a time when it's, there are a lot of fiscal challenges going on. I also want to repeat, last time we met, saying that I appreciate that the administration has kept focus on keeping staffing and program levels pretty much constant going into next school year. And I wanted to ask, I, I understand that going into the budget conversations, the administration didn't have any asks or specific asks for staffing or program changes. Now that we're at this point where, for me at least, I feel comfortable with where we are. I wonder, would the administration want to go back and consider any of its long-term staffing plans or programmatic changes that may have cost implications? And consider proposing an introduction of perhaps one of those. At this point.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. I think if I, if I felt like we had. An offset that would not significantly impact program that we could offer up for one of those because we do have and we have shared in the past. Kind of multi-year forward-thinking staffing plans across the district that we, we do believe that we need. But given the fiscal challenges of this year and I think maybe FY23 as well. Unless we were able to find an offset, I would be pretty challenged to bring one of those forward, I think, in this environment.
Yeah, thank you.
And Stephen, I also wanted to bring back, I've been thinking a lot about what you said on the 30th, about kind of the creativity and innovation and. That comment and you made an example about, I think you gave an example of an insurance program or something. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate that, you know, it's always good to have your, your, your thinking raised during these times when you're in budget, when you're in COVID. And, you know, there are opportunities to be innovative during that. And so I just want you to know that that, that hasn't been lost on us and we'll continue to think about that. And we've done, I think we've done quite a bit of innovation and creative. Programming in the past and will be prepared to kind of put that, that type of thinking maybe forward with a little more bigger organizationally in the future.
Great. Look forward to that. Thank you.
Gene, do you have any thoughts to share?
Well, I think you pared it down as far as you can go. You can't ask for a lower increase than that. It should even make the governor happy, which. And I really think that part of your. Mission in selling this budget increase, not, you know, not the budget increase, but the tax increase is put it in the hands of the people responsible and, you know, make some suggestions on how the legislature could handle this differently and offer relief to people. Because the property taxes. It's, it's not sustainable. If people's salaries or incomes aren't increasing at the same rate as the taxes, it is not sustainable and people will rebel. So that's my thought. You've done a great job.
Thank you, Gene. Allison, do you have some, do you want to add something?
I'm sure. I mean, I would echo Gene's comments that I think that. The Nicole and Sean have done a great job at minimizing the spend while maintaining programming. At least as far as we can tell, right? And I think, I think it was Mike who said, the way we would talk about this is not that. It's a, that we're controlling our spending and the budget increases really, or the, the tax increases really out of our control. I think that. Makes sense to me in terms of like a snippet or a soundbite.
So excellent. Thank you. Alex.
Thank you, Tori. So first, I was already impressed with you all last time on December 30th. Now I'm just. What you all did. But the real comment is, I'm thinking about like the future for '23. And the, the, the good point about, I appreciate you sharing about what happens if we borrow 57.8 million versus 56.8 million. And what's nice about that is that we don't really have to make that decision until next year, technically, right? That when the, the project's over and we have to determine the loan. And I bet, and I think that's a good strategy for us to think that if we spend 1 million, we save the community over 3 million, which will then also mean that our debt service just, it might not be that much lower per year, but it's a little bit even smaller on that, that will help with the long-term savings. And I do recommend us to remember that point for next year when we're doing this budget and why I think it's better for us not to use more than, you know, what we already, what you've already proposed in using the general fund. So I really appreciate the, the thinking, the short term, but also the long-term fiscal investment and frugality of making sure that we're viable, maintaining our programs, but also making it viable from a tax. And I mean, legitimately, I think you have given us options. Like we can maneuver on almost every aspect that we can. More creative, more creative maybe next year and stuff, but just really, just let me just say, I'm just awe and awe. So thank you.
That's fabulous. Thanks, Alex. Liz?
Thanks, Nicole and Sean and everybody. This is really impressive work. I just echo what other folks have said and just would reiterate my support for the move to expand funding for the liaisons and. And support for using the fund balance for anti-racism work. And I know that's not part of this operating budget proposal. I can't remember when do or how do we decide to spend fund balance? Is there a process for that or is that more discretionary?
I was gonna jump in first.
It's a lot more discretionary than the capital reserve. Those have to be done on build, spent on buildings. The fund balance is left there for those situations where you need discretion in how you spend it. I don't know that there are a lot of limits on it. I'll leave that to Nicole.
But it would require board approval. For whatever action is going to be taken and if it got into anything that was kind of. Was not evident to be within the realm of use of fund balance, we would surely get a legal opinion on that and, and support you guys in making that decision.
The timing depends on whether you're getting fund balance and counting on it as an offsetting revenue as part of the budget process, which is that $100,000 we're talking about tonight. At any point during the year, if an unbudgeted expense proposal comes before the board. Last year, it was funding for upgrades to our phone system. We had received a grant and it was an unbudgeted expense and the board needed to provide matching funds. And the board acted, voted at a meeting to authorize use of fund balance to provide those funds. And the board acted, voted at a meeting to authorize use of fund balance to provide those funds. So it's, you know, it, timing matters if it's part of the budget process and you're using it strategically as an offsetting revenue. The rest of the year, it can happen at any time with board action.
So what that might look like is the, the steering committee, subcommittee that's working on something that needs funding, needs like money spent, would submit a, a proposal to the board for consideration to spend money? That's
Yes. And I think we, we also have to remember that a large portion of that has come, has come into that balance with the purpose of the capital project. So we also just need to keep remembering that, you know, that's why, that's why a large portion of that money is there. So given that it was budgeted for that purpose, that's what the, the voters passed, the, you know, this current budget with it in there for that we, we need to honor that. But there is enough in there, obviously, from some other favorable balances in prior years that could be used for other purposes like you described, Liz.
The one point seven eight million as of six thirty, how, what portion of that would you say is dedicated for the capital project versus more flexible?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but.
Did you say, Nicole, that the, the amount on the, the the slide that had the impact of the debt and the capital project carryover for five years? That fund carryover of eight hundred thousand dollars, that, that's not included in the one point seven eight million, right?
Correct. That's what we're projecting. We will end this year. We'll basically add another eight hundred thousand dollars for that.
Yeah. And clearly that all is specifically for the capital project. But you're saying, Sean, that there's other existing fund balance that was gained because of, we didn't spend it on debt or other things for the capital project?
I think there is some from the prior year that we had had for financing, and I'm not sure that we used it all. But the bulk of it is what Nicole just described.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's where we'll need to figure out and get some advice on how do you, you know, do you leave it all and fund that fund balance? And, you know, make some notes somewhere about the amounts that really need to be kept for this. Or do you create separate funds to hold that money with a, a little more strictly delineated for?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other thoughts and questions? I think it's a wonderful celebration. Being incredibly thoughtful, short-term, long-term for our citizens and the financial pressure that we're all under. So congratulations and thank you. Yeah. And where would we like to take it from here?
Well, Tori, I just wanted to mention a few things. Number one, you know, we, after, I, I think I hear general agreement. I think we've got a few, a few things to, to, to bring back, but for the most part, it sounds like this bu- budget is packaged in a way that you are, all are willing to adopt next week. So that's exciting and we will put all the warnings together for you in the articles. So you have everything that you need next week so that then we can, you can approve and we can move forward. So part of what we'll talk about next week too, is in reviewing the end report and the budget flyer, is that communications piece. Which you all started to kind of form that communications plan on the thirtieth, and I've got some good notes on that too. But I would ask all of you to think about, we would love to have at least one, maybe two board members work with, you know, Nicole, I and Emily, Hekker, Communications Director, particularly on the budget flyer that goes out and really highlights the great things that are happening in the school, how the investments are used, explains the, the tax impacts and all that kind of stuff. So if you all could think a little bit about that. So communications, the second piece is advocacy. So there's going to be plenty of specific things to advocate for that came up last week. There's already some, some things in process. So more forward-thinking, a, a piece of legislation would be the waiting study that Alex has already been working on a bit and will be part of a conversation, a joint legislative conversation with Burlington next Monday that you all have been invited to. There was the advocacy for additional federal stimulus to offset the loss in revenue, which has impacted the Ed Fund. There was the advocacy for the not moving the teacher retirement expense into the Ed Fund this coming year. So those would be some of the, I think, the, the biggest areas. I don't know, Nicole, if you have any additional ones that I missed. But I think those are, those are kind of the three biggies that we would be looking for some advocacy from, from the board moving forward.
Great. Okay. So I think we're on to our next agenda item. Correct. All right. So this is, this is a conversation that I'd like to shape around safety and security. I'd like to really root it in, in our values so that we're really clear about what our vision is for community engagement around school and school safety and security. And so I wonder if we could just start with a quick go around from the board members of, you know, what is the value of community engagement? And if we could just start there with just some simple values of that, so that as we kind of move into that phase of the new phase two of engaging our community around safety and security for schools, we can, we can continue to refine what we're rooted in. So I was wondering if you could just take a minute, just think about what, you know, what, what's the value of community engagement? And then we can just kind of popcorn around. I'm just going to jot down some of our values and then we're going to move to thinking about what our vision is for community engagement at this next phase around safety and security. What opportunities we want to create? What would be some barriers? How do we utilize resources? So kind of getting into some of those, that thinking around shaping. And then once we're, we kind of have some conversations ourselves rooted in values, then I'll, I'll start opening it up to our community members who are also on that would like to add to. Once we sort of engage in our own conversations, I'll do board discussion first and then we'll reach out to the community members that are here that would like to have some input. Okay, this budget buddy is going to leave. Excellent. Thank you, Gene, so much.
Thank you so much, Gene.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you, Allison.
See you next week. All right. So, you know, to start, you know, like what, what are some, what are some values that we hold around community engagement? For me, one value is belonging, is, is we, one, we are elected by our community to represent them in our system, in this system, and that sense of belonging, that we all belong to each other. That's, that's a value of mine.
A value for me is equity and, and justice. And I think I'm, I'm white, I'm college educated, I'm privileged. You know, the majority of our five members are as well. And we might have blind spots about what our community is feeling, thinking, how they're impacted and without proactively engaging the various stakeholders. Students, you know, our various communities of color and language groups and longtime residents, new residents, like there's so many different voices here in Winuski and that is a great strength of ours, but it, it is a very significant challenge for getting community input. So it needs to be done really proactively and deliberately seeking many voices.
Thank you. Someone want to add?
I keep on looking at the end statement and then the first word is all, all students will graduate. And when I think about that, what that means is that like, it's the empathy and the inclusiveness of listening to everybody, but also being open to hear all sides of the issue and, and being willing to hear that. So, so all is what's driving my value of openness and empathy.
Thank you.
So I think for me, watching all that we have going on in this country right now, it is not, I don't believe what we ever want to stand for in this country. I have to win and you have to lose. I think we need to make sure that we understand, we're never going to get a hundred percent. And partly due to Liz's comments, not being able to understand even, or take the time to want to understand somebody else's viewpoint is completely wrong. But we got to keep in mind, I think, that along the equity lines, we need to end up in a point where we may not be able to live with everything we have, but we need to have enough voices coming through to understand that we are not leaning too hard to one side or the other and that we are making the best judgments we can make based on the opinions we've gotten that, that walk us as a board down the middle. Nobody wins everything, nobody loses everything, but we all get a little bit of something. And we know where the endpoints are to juggle. So I think that inclusion is, is a key piece in understanding that.
Thank you. Stephen?
I, I, I don't know that I would have that much to add because the, the values that have been brought up by my fellow board members echo what I was thinking to say. The idea of a board representing the school, on the one hand, and on the other hand, representing the community. I, I wonder how well the, this board has adopted the idea of constituents and being accountable to constituents. And I've, I've noticed a lot of information coming from this board out to the community. But at least during the board meetings, I haven't noticed a lot of communication coming from the community to the board. I'm, I'm not aware, of course, at, at what the individual board members do to generate that communication from the community. As I'm unaware of how the administration connects with the community to make sure that the schools are representing what Winuski wants to see in, in this next generation. I, I look forward to learning more about that and, and participating in those conversations.
Awesome. Thank you. All right. So we do have a pretty broad list of values here, equity, justice, belonging, communication going back and forth between our constituents, representation, voice, proactive, deliberate. So my next question is, what are, you know, I think most of us have, you know, saw the presentations that, you know, were the first phase of starting the conversation around safety and security. And I'm wondering, I want to shape it this way, what is our vision for community engagement to gather information from our community? This would be communication to the board around safety and security.
I, I, for, for me, I, I would love to have a flow of communication. I would love to, for me, as, as a board member, I'd love to have many, many conversations with community members to understand better how community, how Winuski's community views safety. So that I can represent those views in the decision-making of the board. So I guess for me, volume as a number of conversations is, is important. And coming back to a point that Liz made, being able to access those conversations, no matter what the linguistic or cultural background of a community member is, is, is very important. And Tori, you and I have talked about that as well.
Yeah. And that is that whole idea of, you know, what opportunities do we want to create? And then what are the barriers? And what do we have access to, to eliminate barriers? And if we don't have access, how do we find access to eliminate those barriers? Any other visions or thoughts, you know, volume conversations, hearing views of safety?
I guess I'd be interested in a little more education on some of the ways that, so we got a presentation about how Winuski schools have been, you know, implementing safety and security. I could do my own research, but I think it'd probably be helpful for the board and for community members to have like one or two examples or readings or kind of case studies of a school district that doesn't have an SRO or, or approaches safety and security through, you know, another means. Or also to, to hear more about the restorative justice work that is already happening. And I understand there's a couple of grants and I see Kayla Loving on, on every board meeting reliably and, and understand that she is one of those who's working on restorative justice. And I have to admit, I'm really a novice and would, would love to hear what work is already happening on that front to handle, you know, conflict in a, in a way that's you know, different perhaps than might have been done in the past.
Okay, thank you. Alex? Want to add anything?
Yeah, I've been thinking about like, you know, how well the budget process went. And, and, and part of it was we gave the administration time to kind of like propose and then we had questions and got back and there was budget buddies and all that. And it's a process that works well. If you look at the capital project, we had similar thing. The unfortunate part about public safety is kind of became more prominent and it is more prominent that we haven't really given time to the administration to kind of actually link everything and how it links to the end statement. You know, and, and when I look at it. And, and, and I think when I first came on the board, one of the, the, and I apologize for not remembering the first half hour that we do that like, and it was done by the board, working with Sean, that they talked about some topic that was interesting. So my first year was about the tiers of, the tiers of support.
Focus on learning.
Focus on learning, right? And, and let's be fair, safety and security is a focus on learning in the context of the end statement. You know, and, and I think in some ways, unfortunately, it's as undeveloped, but like you were working on so many other aspects and it becomes more prominent, right? And so how do we balance that? And so how do we balance that now with kind of a speed up process? But also still stay true to the end statement of like, you know, giving the flexibility to learn while hearing all the voices, you know, like we do with the budget, what we did with the capital project. And there's probably other things that I can't think of on that level. Because I think when we do those things, the administration is all like those presentations, they were thoughtful, but they also had data and purpose, meaning it was tied to the end statement of why we were doing, here's the data, this is the plan. I gotta admit, public safety and security is one of those things that I think it's kind of one of those things that we think we know what it's doing and we just assume. And doesn't have that same thoughtfulness. And maybe it does, I just never seen it. To be fair, on that level.
Alex, I also remember you having some questions around what data, like what are we measuring? You know, what's the, the whole measurement piece that we're doing in our system and what data do we have showing kind of what Graham was asking for? What data do we have on school incidences and, and what, what does, what problem does the SRO solve based on measurement, something like that?
And that, once again, that goes back to like making sure we're tying into the end state, evaluating it in the context of the end statement. Right? And that goes back again, like, and I know that we struggle with sometimes with data because I'm not, oh, you know, sometimes the easiest data gives us the data that we want, but it doesn't actually tell us on how we really evaluate the end statement. That's hard as part, right? And we need to think, and this is one of those ones, because the SOR applies to the city, the work of the city, that we should also be working with the city to figure out what are the city, what, what can we utilize in some of the city data to actually also evaluate if this is a grand scheme? From what I've heard in terms of the presentation, that the SOR, SRO is a position that's both for a safety and security for a school, but also has prolonged long-term effects on the city. And some of the things that I would like to see is also that partnership then with the city and the school to actually show some data that actually suggests that this is helpful. For example, if the SRO is about developing kind of like, you know, relationship, I would love to notice that like, is this a recruitment pipeline for police officers in Winuski in the future? And seeing the Winuski police force be more diverse so that there's better, stronger relationship. Right now, when I look at the kind of the data and all the things, it seems like it's a point person, like in, in engineering, if you put all the stress on hoping that it's only one officer that's developing all the relationships on one thing, that is a, that is a fail, like that's a, that's a poor design engineering, right? And if the goal is, is to develop strong relationship with the whole police force, a systematic perspective, then doesn't that entail us also, all the police officers having great relationships with all the students? Doesn't that entail that after 10 years, somehow the relationship with the police and the students, I would have seen someone say, I want to be a police officer in my county, in my community. Hence also all this thing that we worry about flight being part of the longer community. What are the data on those levels? If there was a comprehensive plan on public safety and security? Right? And those are things that I think about when I look at the overarching program.
Thank you for that. Liz?
Yeah, I have a kind of clarifying question for the other trustees following up on Mike's initial comment about making sure that we're keeping open voices and hearing everyone. And I deeply believe in that. I also want to make sure that from an equity perspective, we're also considering whose voices are most impacted and centering the voices of the kids in the school with a lot of weight, particularly the kids of color. And we can do that and hear other voices. But I think it's incumbent upon us to to listen to those who our end statement is all about. Our kids are the future and the end statement is that students, all students will leave healthy and successful and productive lives. So I do want their parents' input. I do want faculty's input. I do want the city's input. I do want our taxpayers' input, but above all, what matters most is that the students feel safe. And hearing from them in a very, you know, concrete way, I think is really important for my understanding of how we move forward with this decision.
So what I'm noticing is we have some of the ideas that have come up through this is to be able to make sure we have a flow of communication with community members that allow, that, that breaks down the barriers of really being able to hear our community on what elements make them feel safe, what safety is to them. And then also possible more education around what is being implemented that may not have been addressed, I can't remember the presentation, if it's a restorative justice work was presented? Sean, was that presented? I don't, not sure if it was, but that, that was something Liz, you brought up around what, what's actually happening in the building to build on. Alex, you brought in a good point in terms of like a point person that it, that there's too much pressure on that one point. And that brought me back to our conversations in August around reimagining safety. And so that there's multiple points of safety that people can point to that helps them feel physically, emotionally and socially safe in our buildings and what that would be. And then the idea of linking what we're going to be doing, how we're going to be doing it, back to what data do we have to say that things are going well from multiple perspectives? So I guess with this great information, I, I can take this in one way, you know, it might be the time to start asking the community member who are here to, to also share with us their input, is getting down to the what and how of what we, how we wanted to have this conversation, what, what we can create to gather this feedback, to really listen and to really hear. That was kind of a talking out loud process piece. So does the board members have anything else you all want to add to what we've just discussed?
Yeah, I had just have one more piece. Go ahead, Stephen.
Maybe you were going to say the same thing. I wanted to ask for clarification if the conversation now is focused on safety or on the school resource officer? I heard us kind of shift from one to the other.
Right. I, I, I see the SRO officer as sort of one point in the whole safety spectrum because I'm really interested in getting community's feedback of what safety means to them and, and, and sort of adding it to what the presentation was about what we have in school right now. So that's certainly how I'm interacting with it. I see it sort of enmeshed.
Okay, thank you.
Does someone else want to add to that, how you're seeing that?
Yeah, so a couple of, a couple of points, just to pick out things that I've heard. Relying on data. Sometimes it's good. Got to be cautious. I think I would just caution us on understanding what we're not seeing in the data and why. You get what you measure for one thing. But what I've seen over the years, at least in my employment piece, is that somebody that does a really, really good job and things don't happen to them because they're, they're spending the extra time doing the extra work. They don't get the failures. When in fact, others who may not do quite as good a job will have data points that stand out. And so I guess I would just caution us from a data standpoint to be careful about what it is we're seeing and how we're responding to it. And what we're not seeing, I guess, is the bigger concern. The other piece in this whole conversation, and I think Stephen, your piece with the shift or the, the movement back and forth between safety and security and the discussion of the SRO. I think what we got in my mind, when you're trying to resolve a problem, I'll call, call it a challenge and not a problem. You got to know what it is you're after first. What is, what is the challenge we're trying to fix? Right now, it seems to me, and I'm going to go back to Graham's comments right at the top of our show. What data do we have over the last 10 years that suggests we have need to have a permanent, and I'm not taking sides one way or another, I'm just trying to expand on his comments for a point. What do we have to suggest that there's a need to have the officer in the building? If that's not the case, what purpose does that position, regardless of who it is, serve to help with the security? And if that's not there completely, is there anything that you need to replace it with? So it's that whole problem solving technique of why are we looking at this? Okay, I understand what you just said, why are we looking at that? Okay, I see that. Why are we looking, if you ask enough questions of why, you're going to get down to the root cause of something that you can actually fix or some way to fix it. The discussions that I've seen so far are twofold. Get rid of the SRO and the SRO's job has been doing this. And I haven't seen the discussion of what are those things that are useful? What are those things that we've gotten out of it? What are those things that we can't do without? What are those things that we could do without? And how else can we do that? I just don't want this to end up being all or nothing with regard to the SRO, but it needs to be focused on the security and safety.
Great. And I'm going to call on you, Liz, one thing I'd like to add, and thank you for that, Mike, one thing I'd like to add that I certainly feel like what do we need is we weren't hearing in, in the presentation, we didn't hear the other, the reason we're even looking at this challenge to try to fix was we did hear from students that came to us about their experiences in schools. We also have a national push around SROs and there's a lot of research and data around that, that we haven't really addressed in, in conversations yet about the SRO. So I just want to put that on the table, Liz, it was, it was making me, you were making, having me think about that. Liz, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I think there's this meta question of what does it mean to be an anti-racist school district? And how, what does it mean? What does, how does that apply to the question of, of what makes the school? What makes an anti-racist school safe and secure?
I want to say that much, thank you. Yeah, Alex?
Well, to answer the question about data, and you're right, Mike, when you do data work, starting with the data without the research question or the question and what you're evaluating is the worst mistake that you're doing because then you're trying to fit data in a square bag. But we have a lot of words that we can actually figure out, how do you evaluate programs? And when I say this, I'm going like, we have an end statement, but we also have on the school website, the purpose of the SRO. And if you read the outline and the outcomes of what we're doing there. And then we also have the police website, our Winuski Police Strategic Plan and their mission and vision. And in one sense, when we're looking at the data, we should keep in mind, do these three things, our end statement, leaving to the SRO what the purpose is, because there are great language on what they're using. I think one of the SRO duties is, is about like, you know, teaching anti-racism, deconstructing, you know, this process. Part of the police website is making sure that we're providing safety for all residents in Winuski and also doing in creative functions, right? And these are the kind of things when I'm looking at the data, I'm going like, okay, you put this on your, what we said that you're going to do this. Does the data speak to this element? What are the action, and some of the data points is, to me, is not necessarily just a data point, but like, what are the programs that you're actually doing to achieve this? Those are the things that I want to learn more about. And that's why the focus of learning is like, has been great for me because, you know, we wouldn't know about tiers of support if I didn't have that. Right? Because I can't really, I'm not an expert on the programming level, but I do want to know what's going on. And then it, it gives a foundation of how do we use the data to see if the program is working because it allows us to see whether we're moving to the goals that are being stated in our end statement. And once again, end statement, the SRO website and the police mission, the Winuski Police website mission.
Okay. The question that came up for me was, how do we streamline sharing information and data to get information from our community? So comes down to a how question for me. How, how, how do we create those opportunities to be able to link information together to sort of inform? And then I think that there's this, this information to give, but there's so much information to receive. And understanding, you know, the simplicity of, I know for me, what makes me feel safe in the world? How do we get, we need to get that information so that we can look across our system to see, to match what was presented about what we have? And is that, is that matching what, what people are saying they need? So I, I think at this point, I'd like to start accessing the community members that are here, I don't want to have them wait any longer to join in. And the way I feel, I guess what I should ask, will we be able to see the community members talking to us? Or is it just, we're going to be seeing each other and then I'm going to be hearing them? I need that, that point of reference just because it matters to me whether I can see people who are talking.
Yeah, of course. So what do you prefer, Tori? It's up to you. So a feature of this webinar Zoom platform is that you can allow the attendees to speak, but I don't believe you could see them because you couldn't see Graham or Elizabeth earlier, could you?
Couldn't, no.
Right? Or I can, if someone raises their hand, they can be promoted to a panelist and then it will be, they'll be the same as you are and, you know, all of the members currently.
Okay. And how many community members do we have?
There are 10 attendees currently.
10 attendees. Is that, is it too big to have everybody be in the same view?
Well, if you, if you wanted to see every, all of the attendees, I would promote them to panelists. And then if you wanted to see everyone, you would just change your view and the way to change, yeah, in the corner, you know.
Okay. Okay. And I think the way I'll roll it is, is if we can have people raise hands that would like to have, you know, to comment, but I just thought it would be helpful if we could all see each other.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so the floor is open. Mary Ann DeBay has raised her hand, so I will promote her to panelist. Also, Tori, I just wanted to mention, this is not related to this conversation, but there is a question here from an anonymous attendee that says, what are Budget Buddies? So I'm just going to respond here. So, or if you want to respond.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Okay. I'll, I'll type it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Great question. Mary Ann, can you hear me?
So I'm trying to unmute her.
I think I've got it, I'm in.
There you are, we can see.
Oh, great. Hi, Mary Ann.
I'm in a wifi corner of the house with everybody doing their homework, so bear with me.
Yeah.
Um, well, you know, I think a lot of the comments that I had, the, this board has really given very thoughtful consideration and I'm really excited about the process that you're talking about and the values of engaging the school community and the community at large. And it's certainly a really complicated issue. As I sit here, I was being Google chatted by a student asking me to help him figure out how to remain. I was being Google chatted by a student asking me to help him figure out how to remain safe tonight. And so just with everything happening nationally, locally, individually, it really, on this evening, comes home to me that prevention and quantifying prevention and gathering data around what didn't happen. And I think one of the members already spoke to this, but I was a little bit multitasking.
Hey, Mary Ann, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you just tell the board what you do for the school?
That's great. So I'm Mary Ann DeBay, and I'm a clinical and school psychologist. And I have been in the district, I can't recall exactly the year, because I started consulting occasionally, and that was about 1997. So I have a lot of connections with multi generations of families and you know, really seeing the the safety and security issues of school evolve on a lot of different levels. Certainly mostly in my role as psychologist. So, you know, I originally asked to speak because there was a reference about a lit review in which information was gathered and analyzed about the role of SROs in public schools. And that was linked to a paper that was co-authored by myself and Brian Delamera. But I was concerned about the use of that data because it didn't reflect the purpose of the paper. And that was really to review the evolution of the role of the SRO in conjunction with therapeutic responses to students in crisis. And somebody had mentioned a case study, and that had been included in there as well. So really, you know, the purpose of writing that was on prevention and de-escalation and effectively managing acute crises. Certainly, there is no answer in that paper or in my brain around like a single, simple response. But I was also concerned that my name was attached to these numbers of data that happened at school. And I don't think it is in any way a program evaluation. And it is in no way reflective or judging what safety and security means overall in the school or even just in the role of the SRO.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And also, thank you for your service to our students and families and faculty.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add, your thoughts around?
Oh, there's so many.
Shaping community engagement for, you know, and it doesn't have to happen now, but just since you're here. Yeah.
I think really, Liz, I liked, I really appreciated many of the comments tonight, particularly around the values. And I hadn't looked at it from that perspective myself, but I think about, and again, there's the overall data, and I think a program evaluation where that can happen makes a lot of sense. I'm concerned that about capturing the experiences of individual students. And I can think of quite a few individual students who have talked about how safe they feel in the preventive role of various adults in the building, including the SRO. And that that's without hearing the individual stories in addition to data. And that data really does have to be carefully collected, because that was what brought me to the meeting. I was concerned that it didn't reflect what I was trying to say. But hearing those individual stories about the safety, so this student tonight, for example, will not be in anybody's data ever. But it is something that I know within a school system, we've done something very meaningful to someone's life.
Great. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. Emily, you want to promote the next person?
Sure. So there's an anonymous attendee who has made a comment that I will read aloud. It says, I appreciate Mike for stating that he is not taking sides. I appreciate this because as the board members' roles are to represent the community's needs and wants, his voice should be representative of the community engagement that must be done.
Excellent. Thanks to whoever stated that. That was wonderful. Appreciate, we appreciate that.
And I don't see any other hands raised. So would anyone else like to make a comment? I don't see any other.
Okay, okay.
Okay, Elizabeth Wood has raised her hand, so I will promote her to panelist.
Great.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Wood, I am an ELL teacher at JFK. I work with second and third grade families who have come to Winuski through our refugee resettlement program and are speakers of languages other than English. And my comments are just speaking to their experiences, both as families of color and families who have some language barriers. I think it's really important that we center their their voices and their experiences as we go through this process. And, you know, several of you spoke to that, but so we need to be ensuring that they have equal access to any forums, discussions that we have, interpretation. And I think, you know, we've talked about having separate forums that are translated and interpreted, but if we're having like, community discussions, I think it's, you know, to be able to say, okay, I'm going to be present at this particular forum, regardless of whether the district decided this is the one I'm supposed to go to, because this is where the interpreters are. So I think we need to be really cognizant of that. And also the students and really making sure their voices are being heard. I'm not sure what outreach has been done yet to the student body, because I am in elementary school. So I feel like there's probably other things going on at middle and high, but making sure that however we can reach them to get their voices, it might be different for different kids. So having different opportunities and different ways for them to reach out and talk about it. I just want to say it's really important to me, like, I've talked to families who have come from other countries, and it didn't take very long for them to have really negative experiences with the police in Winuski. And so I think their experiences are just like, it's very surprising to hear when we have such great reviews of our police and we do have great people coming into our school, the SRO. But it's really, it's the experiences they have do not reflect the message that we're being sent about the police in our community. And I just want to make sure that we we hold that. If you haven't had conversations with families having these experiences, you need to, because it's it's really disheartening. And I think there's change that needs to be made here, though we shouldn't miss the opportunity to do so. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your perspective and your experiences. Really appreciate it. Okay. I think what we'll move next is thinking about.
Sorry, Tori, there's another hand raised, a comment.
Oh, great.
I will.
Great.
Promote to panelist.
Hi, Tori, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thanks for letting us weigh in tonight. And I'm gonna, thanks. I'm going to keep it pretty brief, because I'm just not sure of the answer. But one thing that I've been a little bit concerned about is that it seems as though the education forums that have been held so far have have been mostly been facilitated by white folks. And the education piece of it has mainly come from the the police department. And so I'm wondering, although we heard from WSA a lot this summer, and we learned a lot from from their voices about policing in schools and what that's reflective of, I'm wondering if if we have a sort of equal weight being put on the other side of education coming directly from the Winuski School District, so that it's not weighted heavily on one side. That's all.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. Emily, is there someone else that would like to share?
I don't see any other hands raised. If anyone, any other attendees would like to share comments, now is your chance. Let's see, there's a question. So there's a comment here from, it says, an anonymous attendee. And so it is, what are the next steps? Safety and community forums, dates, times, topics to be presented on, presenters. So this, it looks like this person is looking for more details and more information about the process. Similar to what Heather was saying, will these sessions lead to a vote? So again, some more clarifications around the process. Will the steering committee being discussed have a role in this? And if so, how? Finally, how will we move from this phase to the next in our anti racism work? So lots of questions in one. And if you'd like, do you want me to repeat any of that?
No, if you could print a copy it and then send it to me in an email, that would be super helpful. Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't see any other hands raised. So I believe that meant the end of the public comments.
Great. Thank you for moderating. So where I feel like we need to go next is sort of the how and the what we're going to be doing to be able to reach our community in ways that they've expressed. I think the addressing barriers. What I'm wondering is, would it be helpful to have two of us be tasked to begin to put two brains on on this community engagement? We have until the election to get communication, community engagement forums, educations, conversations out there. And so it is a short amount of time. Yet it is a good amount of time to be able to try and start developing, how would we want to do this? And we need to do it by kind of the beginning of March. It would be helpful for us to get a decision to the city around how we're interacting with this information. So I'm wondering if it would be helpful to have two people put their minds on this. Sean also suggested we potentially hire a facilitator to do, to help us with this work. Stephen, want to jump in?
I want to say yes. I think it's a fantastic idea, and I would love to be one of those two people, or three or four, however many.
Right. Yeah. It helps if we just have two, so it's not always a public meeting.
No, Tori did.
Go ahead.
So go ahead, go ahead.
I was just going to ask Liz directly, are you interested? Would you be interested in working with Stephen on this?
Yep.
Okay. Does that work, Mike and Alex, for you guys to task these two with that? And Mike, what were you gonna?
Yeah, just a quick thought. I thought we had had either a task force or a group that had started on this. Wasn't the community engagement piece part of what that group was going to get together? Did I misunderstand what the intent there was?
Um, there was a start, and it didn't really pan out around UVM helping out, and time kind of got a little little crunchy. So it, Sean put together, Sean and the city put together the presentations that we saw in the last two weeks. And now it's kind of like being able to try to figure out a way to truly get out there and have some conversations.
Okay, so there was not, so there was not a WSA member and others that were tasked with researching this piece already? Or did you say that that fell apart?
Not for us, as this is, this is needs to be designed for us to engage our community on their their feedback.
I understand, understand.
Has done their part in terms of like, they've done research, they want to be involved also, I think, to gather information. They did, I think they had crafted a survey themselves. I don't know where that is in its iteration, and if it's, I know it hasn't been put out yet.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not doubling up efforts and then going to end up at a point where two different, two different points that don't meet. Okay. I would be happy to have Liz and Steve.
Okay. And I think Liz and Steve connecting with Wassa and faculty who've done some lit reviews and have some ideas, you know, like bringing some of these siloed. I think what we're, we are right now in our anti racism work is there's a lot of silos working, and we're trying to bring everything together so that we're all working together in this. And hopefully Liz and Stephen can help make that happen, make some connections. Alex, you had a comment.
Yeah, and to just pay proper respect to the city, I would also recommend maybe potentially like, making sure that we reach out to the city council to make sure that it's a collective. I mean, I know everything is about the school, but like, and how this has been presented, it's been about school and relationship to the community. It's the larger outward of like, when they're outside of the school. And since the city council paid due respect in making sure that our voice was heard on the charter committee, I think it'd be appropriate and make sure that we do the same. Due respect and involve a couple of the city councilors potentially in being involved in this, if that's if other board members feel that that's inappropriate.
I think that's a wonderful piece of information, because the relationship between city and school is an incredible value for for Winuski.
And must remain strong.
And must, yes, well said. Okay. So I think it might be helpful then to Liz and Stephen, maybe us. Alex, did you have a comment?
I don't want to make any mistake that we did in the past where we didn't ask Sean for his feedback, too. Would it be appropriate now to just hear Sean's thoughts on this and anything that we're missing from an angle?
Absolutely. Sean, do you have something to add?
And are we tethered in policy governance? So here's my thoughts. I think that number one, I hear a conflict in process that you want to have and the timeline that you need to meet if you want to make a decision about specifically about the SRO for next year. I also see a conflict in that you approved Wassa's demand about the SRO, then you rescinded it.
Right.
And yet it also appears to be a demand that is being fully embraced as if it were approved. So I, but the first one is the most, I think, the most important. I think you as a board need to decide, are you going to make a decision about this for next year? And can you have the process that you want to get the information that you need to act as trustees to make a decision about that by March 30? And if you can't, and you need more time for process, then you should be transparent with the community about that.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And my my comment to you, Tori, and you that you reiterated about a facilitator is I think that both the board and and myself and my role have the potential to be to be seen as biased. And so that's why I think having somebody else lead or organize, facilitate could be helpful. Because I already feel like I was made out, at least to be biased by some of the comments that were made in the Q and A during those two sessions. And so I don't really feel comfortable continuing in that facilitator role any further. You know, I think it would, it's certainly my responsibility in my role to support that work. But I think it would be hard for me to do that now, given what happened at those sessions. And I think, given that there was obviously some dissatisfaction with the way that those were structured. And given that this is your decision, it should be board work.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that input. Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for that input.
Because Steven and I are the new members in this conversation. I, I guess I'd be, it'd be helpful to have a quick refresher. So the board approved Wassa's demands, then rescinded it. Could Tori, you provide just a little bit of a chronological bit of background, just in this public meeting setting to have us all be on the same page as far as what happened?
Absolutely. So we accepted the, I think it's number three, the SRO demand. And in that process, it was challenging because we were, it seemed like as a group, we were supportive of the students and wanting to move this district forward to become an anti-racist district. And yet what we didn't do was we didn't do the process that we're talking about right now. Getting feedback from our community around safety and security. So that's why we rescinded, so that we could do community outreach.
And I, I believe that one can be trusty and committed to anti-racism and still be actively, openly engaging the community in this process and hearing all sides. But if others disagree that that is possible, then I would welcome hearing that feedback.
No, we as board members can certainly have a leaning in our own mind, but I think we really need to understand where, where it is we are being requested to go if there is a, you know, an absolute majority and it's obvious where the community wants to go. And we have asked a broad enough scope. The other piece is, this is not necessarily an all or nothing. We have to be open to the fact that we may end up with a composite result that not necessarily everybody will be happy with, but it meets the needs for the safety and the security of the school at, at the, at the best, at the best outcome.
And then Tori, can you clarify in terms of the timing that you just laid out? You said we have until the election to get feedback. But then a vote on whether to continue the MOU for the SRO would happen after the election?
Yes, the city would like for us to get back to them on our decision, if we, if we make a decision by March 30, by March 30.
Uh huh. And are the newly elected trustees even like sworn in to office by then?
Yes, so that'll happen what, the first Tuesday of March, I think is when the elections are happening. Yeah.
So I think that the, having more time for the process makes a lot of sense. There is a potentially some rub in the community engagement process. If it's like, this is an election issue. But maybe that's like by design that you, you want. So we're currently sitting trustees, if any of us are running for election. Challenged by somebody who perceives us as having an opinion on this one way or another. And then this becomes like about, like getting one person or another elected in order to, you know, have some number of votes. I could, I could just see that kind of politicizing something that we are really trying to have be an open process. And perhaps there's no avoiding that. And, and maybe I'm like, I tend to worry a lot, so maybe I'm just like worrying for nothing and like, this won't be a thing. But it's just something I wanted to flag as a possibility and.
Yeah, just to, just to take that, that particular point, Liz. One of the things I hope is that we have built a strong enough foundation in policy governance that a, somebody coming in just to get one thing done will be kept on the path that needs to be kept, we need to be, we need to stay on in order to get the right outcome for our district, not the right outcome for an individual. But I think the rest of the board would have to help make sure that we stay on that path, that we're doing the right thing for the right reasons with the right data and the right input. So I hope that would keep one, somebody, somebody doing this on only one subject. After doing this for nine years, I cannot imagine doing that. But, you know, hopefully we can keep that in check.
Great. Sean?
Yeah. So I mean, one of the things that I've heard from a couple of you is that this falls under kind of the broader umbrella of becoming an anti-racist district, which I totally agree with. We haven't organized that umbrella yet. So I, I'm wondering, you know, and we're moving on it. You know, this, the steering committee is, is getting composed, there'll be applications. There'll be demand-based teams. But that even has to be sorted out because demand number three wasn't adopted by the board. But I'm still unclear whether or not it's part of that work, this demand-based teams or not. So I guess my, my point is, it is an important component and I'm not, I think it could be part of being an anti-racist school district, either having an SRO that knows how to be a part of that work, or not having an SRO. So, but unless we build the, the structure and the system that is going to organize these complicated pieces, restorative justice, which has been brought up, which is in its infancy at WSD. All the curriculum pieces, the other demands. I worry about, you know, taking a singular action and moving that forward before we have the broader system and structure in place to do that. And if you want to have the thoughtful community engagement that you have described, I think it's going to be really challenging to do in two months' time. And you would learn more from the steering committee after they're ready and they've done work together to shape this specific community engagement within the context of becoming an anti-racist school district.
I guess.
I just want to make sure we, go ahead, Liz, sorry.
There, there's just one piece in terms of the urgency for action. And, you know, I, I understand this fall was totally nutso in so many ways. I wish that this conversation had kind of continued, like directly following that decision to rescind. Because I feel like there was such rich and valuable conversation about this already happening. And now I'm trying to like, remember back to what was raised. But I, I just remember hearing some pretty heart wrenching stories that weren't all directed about the SRO. But I just, I want to make sure that we get some direct input from kids in the school that could in fact shape a decision if, if there is a feeling of harm. I'm uncomfortable delaying any action on the matter for another year. And that's like, I'm, I totally appreciate that this work is like a much, much longer process. But I'm worried about delaying because that outreach hadn't kind of been gotten to yet. I don't know if any of the other board members have thoughts on that balance between the timing of the broader process and that the tangible actions that we can take to demonstrate that we're not just talking about this, we're actually like seriously grappling with the various components and making decisions.
Yeah, I want to put no time limit, except to say that it is urgent to move forward. I want to make sure that at the end of when, when we can say we have put our stamp on what we want to see done or how we want to see things move forward, that it is the best we can do and not just because it was done fast within a time limit. I want, I want to make sure we do things well. I don't want to walk out of this saying we, we did it poorly to rush it. I would rather take a little bit longer and do it well. But I think the community engagement piece, getting out and understanding has got to start, you know, relatively, relatively soon. That'll, after a month, six weeks, eight weeks, end of February, we're going to have an idea of what kind of input we have, what works for how we get input, what that input is starting to shape up to be, and whether we're actually getting that broad enough scope. But if we're looking to do that in two weeks, it's not going to happen. But we got to move it for, we got to move it forward.
Yeah. I'd just say as an example, when motivated, like the Charter Commission outreach was delayed by two months entirely because of COVID. And we came up with a plan to get the outreach that we needed to do to feel like we could make an informed decision. And we did that outreach with the help of the liaisons who were amazing and would like not have been able to do that at all without them. But because of that, like, we felt an urgency to act based on like, that conversation had been happening for, for a long time. And at the November election is when the majority of people would have a chance to weigh in on it. And so like, let's put together a plan with deadlines and like, do the best job we can and see what we've got. You know, in, in February. So yeah, Steven, like, let's team up and welcome other thoughts.
And also, so if y'all are ready to make a plan and then access us as you need us individually. And then I would also think in terms of access to resources as you're thinking through, you know, what the plan would be. Would, John, they would connect with you directly, right, for access to resources? Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks for the robust conversation and thoughtfulness and everyone adding in kind of gives us sort of the, all the elements that we need to consider to really get out there and hear, and hear from our community. All right. Anything else?
I mean, I know, I keep on looking at the attendee list, noticing Jesse Baker's on there. Do we, I mean.
Oh, Jesse.
So hi, Jesse. But should we just? If Jesse's willing, should you just add any comments on this? And maybe she's writing in the Q and A and going, no.
I, I worked closely with Jesse on the Charter Commission and I'm happy to be very proactive in coordinating with the city staff and council and police.
She did just say that she's just listening tonight, so I want to respect that.
Yeah.
I'm just here tonight listening as a resident and somebody who might be a future partner. So I have nothing else to add this evening. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jesse.
And, 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 and thank you, Liz and Steven for volunteering and taking, greatly appreciated.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, Tori, there are just a few questions here in the chat, comments. So one is, please consider BIPOC professional facilitator. That's Black Indigenous or Person of Color facilitator. And then another comment is, does more time for the process keep us from making a decision on the SRO? Which it sounds like that was addressed already. And then that, that comment was addressed, then have ELL families had their forms yet? And I can say that we're working on scheduling that now. And I believe that we have two dates set for January.
And may I ask a question? Is that going to be, is that for them to have access to the two presentations that have already been done?
Yeah, so there's just one presentation, but there are two opportunities to engage. So it's the same presentation. And so that will be, I believe the plan is that the liaisons will interpret those presentations and that information that was encapsulated in those presentations. And then provide access to a school administrator or leader and a city leader to answer questions. So with, with the help of the liaisons or an interpreter, a community interpreter.
Okay. Liz, you, do you have a question?
Well, I'm just wondering that they, whether that could involve a bit more context perhaps than the the presentation as it was delivered? Or could we invite a Wassa student or alum that is from that language speaking community to provide another voice? I just know how limited time is and how challenging it can be to pull together those, those forums and wouldn't want to miss the opportunity to have a really rich discussion of the topic at that opportunity.
Yeah, I think that's a really great point, Liz. And I was just, and Sean, feel free to chime in because I know Sean probably has some more information to share. And that was actually a suggestion that I had made with Kirsten Gaitard as we were trying to organize for the different, you know, you know, cultural and linguistic groups to meet together. And we kind of landed on the fact that that is not the information that was presented to our English as a primary language audience. And so in terms of equity to include a Wassa member or someone who might be presenting additional information would kind of make it an imbalanced information to, opportunity to engage with, with the information. So we thought we would stick with more of a, a pure form, like a literal translation opportunity. But as I said, you know, those are still being shaped. So, you know, I believe some, you know, if there is some board input or, you know, you and Steven, if you have some, you know, ideas or suggestions there, we could definitely loop you into that conversation.
Yeah. So when this came up as an agenda item, we kind of held off on scheduling those because they're, they require a lot of scheduling with liaisons, with city personnel. And so those are not on the, on the schedule yet. So I would say at this point, given the conversation tonight, we just wait till you guys decide how you want to move forward.
Great.
What, what is in play is the, the questionnaire was being done verbally through liaisons with families and their responses being recorded. So that's kind of ongoing. And then the questionnaire is also being done with middle and high school students, but it won't be done till later in the month because they have been delaying a restorative justice questionnaire for months since the beginning of the year. And so we decided as a leadership team that it was important to do that one first and then do the safety and security. So that should be done with middle and high school students by the end of January.
Last time we met, I'm sorry, this is just.
Even, yeah.
Actually, last time we met, I believe that you let us know that there were, I think, 48 respondents to the survey. And I'm curious what that number is now.
It's like 55.
Thanks. Sorry, Liz.
Well, I was just going to say about the questionnaire, I started to work on it and then just like stopped. I was feeling a little stymied almost by how simple it was without a lot of context. And I don't know if anybody else felt the same way. And yeah, I, I wonder if it's getting the information that we. I, I, I wonder if it's getting the information that we, we need.
But I guess. I definitely felt, I felt stymied by it too. I, as a single mom, I definitely need to have some, uh, references of what safety, like to give me some examples so I could check some boxes. Um, and then add and get the thinking going on that. So I, I definitely was stymied on that. Um, I don't know if you have anything else to add to about the survey because I had another thought. Um, I was wondering about access to, um, I hear that in Zoom that we do have access to translations. When you're in a Zoom call?
So apparently there is that functionality. We have not been able to figure it out and make it work. We've been trying to work with some of our colleagues in Burlington and, and, uh, have not been able to get it to work.
Okay, okay. Just want to ask that question. All right, Liz?
Um, I'm curious how folks think it would work, um, and Sean and, and Jesse, if you're listening in. For these liaison meetings in this period between now and, um, town meeting day and when, um, like our sliver is one, one question, but the many members of our, um, community, even those who are not, um, English speakers will have the opportunity to vote on both the budget and, you know, city election items. And um, I think while I, I definitely want to get an overview and feedback on, um, the safety conversation, I, I almost think a more imperative. Conversation is like, here's what's coming up, um, on, um, the school budget. Um, on, and how that incorporates the feedback that was received from many community members about transportation, um, that anti racism work. And then, um, last summer, when the mayor and I think, um, Jim Duncan from the city council were doing outreach as part of the working communities grant, it was, uh, clear that like people wanted the opportunity to vote, but they needed more interpreted education on what they would be voting on and why that matters. So in the context of our earlier work on the budget and the importance of communication. Um, I wonder if something more broad could be arranged. Um, or Jesse, if any of the, the city already has a plan to do multilingual outreach for, um, you know, ballot items or not.
And maybe that's something you and Stephen could explore.
Okay.
How that would, how, how that could segue and then reach out to Jesse and see how that could work. That's a great idea to combine it while we're getting people together and translating it. Okay. I am thinking of adjourning the meeting. It's been an amazing conversation. Is there anything else that someone would like to say before, um, we send off Liz and Stephen to start brainstorming and designing? Um.
Just but thankful, thank you again for your wonderful leadership at the beginning and sending the words that you did. I don't think I, um, but I want to. And setting. Very easy time. And I do want to emphasize to Liz and Stephen, to Mike, Tori and Sean, thank you for taking on this hard work. It is hard. And we need to remember that and be all right and know that we're going to make mistakes in this. But that is all right because I know we will get it right eventually, hopefully sooner than later. But so thank you for your leadership on this.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. All right. I will accept a motion to adjourn this fabulous meeting. And thank you to all community members who joined in and added, added your voices. All right. I got a motion on the table. I'm going to go around because I remember to do that. Mike.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Stephen.
Hi.
Alex.
Hi.
Excellent. I, all right, motion passes. We are adjourned, people.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining. Good night, everyone.